I'd like to call the order, the March 21st, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Sir, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral justus.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Present.
Commissioner Monette?
Here.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Present.
Chair Kistner?
Present.
Next is the public forum. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on items of interest to the public that are not listed on this agenda. Because of restrictions imposed by the Brown Act, the commission may not engage in discussions nor take action on matters not described on this agenda. Please observe the time limit of three minutes. Is there any public comment? Closed public comment. Next item is the consent calendar. Members of the commission or the public may ask that any item be considered individually for purposes of considering alternative action for extended discussion or for public comment. Unless that is done, one motion may be used to adopt all recommendation actions. Anyone want to, anyone want to pull an item?
I need to separate out the minutes because I was not present and recused from minutes for March 7th.
March 7th, alright.
Chuck Mybar, 1236 Spring Street. I would like to ask that the matter regarding denial, the one item that has to be separate to at least have an opportunity for me to present an alternative way to approach or to address this issue.
That's item 4.3, which I believe Ms. Sweeney has also recused from.
So, do I pull that one? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of 11:15 and 12:20 and 4.2?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Then, would you like me to do a motion for the minutes for March 7th? Can I stop? I should be able to vote on that because those are the ones I can vote on.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
And the, what's wrong with the 3:70?
I have to recuse itself.
You recused yourself?
And then the third, so I will go now.
And I'll move to approve the minutes for March 7th, 2017.
Okay, so I can be.
Is there some?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Mr. Mybar?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
We have to have a staff.
Madam Chair, if I might interrupt for one second, is item 4.2, was that encompassed in the motion? I didn't hear that. I heard just the vote on the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
It was.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
This may be very brief, I think.
Huh? Do we need a staff report if it's pulled?
No.
We usually do.
He's asked to make some comments. There's no staff report.
Yeah. 4.3 is the denial resolution for the CIA.
That's correct.
Dormitory expansion and reallocation or kind of a shuffle of their educational offerings at the Greystone Campus. As you, the commission will remember, the resolution before them at the time of the vote was for approval and therefore staff had to write a resolution for denial, bring that before the commission, and that's before the commission this evening.
Again, I'm Chuck Mybar, the attorney for the CIA chair and commissioners. I'm seriously not here to reargue this matter or ask you to change your decision. I'm very aware what the process will be. We do ask that you take a moment to at least discuss the resolution. As you know, this project's extremely important to the CIA and we spent much time and money doing much investigation with traffic study, water feasibility, sewer feasibility, parking study, noise study, and sophisticated visual impact assessment. We also made a number of revisions. We worked hard with staff almost a year to bring this to the commission and we had a recommendation for approval from the staff, unfortunately and disappointingly, the commission couldn't approve it. There are seven findings that need to be made in the resolution. We were hoping that the commissioners could, because it wasn't a very focused discussion about which elements were acceptable, which elements were problematic, whether the commission might be willing to consider each of those resolutions or findings in turn and determine if there's a majority of the commission that supports that or not. And then for the ones that it does support, if the commission could give us some guidance. And I think staff is going to have some other possible way of doing that. But we think it's very, very important for both the applicant, the community, for the city council, because we'll be going there on appeal, to have an understanding about what parts of this project are acceptable to the commission and which parts were a problem. And we also, as you recall, have asked us to be denied without prejudice. And we're, if we're not successful at the council, then we may be back at another time. It will be very, very helpful for everyone to have a clear idea about what adjustments or what issues need to be addressed, should there be another consideration. But as I was saying earlier, it would be very helpful for the council to understand that the commission's thinking on that. So whatever way we can get that input, we think it would be very, very helpful for all of us concerned. And I thank you.
So staff, staff understands the request essentially to, in the resolution before the commission prepared for denial based on the discussion of the commission at that, of the decision night, the review of the project, the night the project was reviewed, I'm sorry. There are three findings that the commission could not support that are required for design review of the 17 design review criteria that are required for support for a project to be approved. And similarly, there are four findings identified in the use permit which the commission could not support of the 12 that are required to be supported or found to be able to be supported by the commission in order to approve a project. So essentially, the applicant is asking for additional direction from the commission regarding where they did find, or which findings they did feel were supportable by the commission to flesh out the future review of the project by either the city council or revision to the design brought back before the commission.
Do you have a copy? Do you have a copy of the findings and the use permit for us?
Not available at this time, so.
What form would that take?
So it would be a resolution that included all of the required findings and for designer view and use permit, identifying where the commission found support for the project and identifying where the commission was not able to make the findings to support the project.
You mean, that would be an agendized item, that we would have that assignment to come back with?
So there's two different ways that staff can see it being done. One, give direction to review the tape and draft the resolution based on the discussion points that the commission had at that time. And then making determinations based on that information about where the commission found they could support the project and then also include the findings that the commission could not include, which are in the resolution before the commission this evening. Or agendize an item and discuss each one of them in the context of the project and provide staff more direct direction to then go back and craft the resolution and ultimately review it and make a decision.
If we did the former, would that be in the written form that we would submit to you offline? I mean, no.
Staff would review the tapes of the meeting and draft the resolution identifying where commissioners indicated support in addition to the findings that are included in the resolution tonight where they could not find support.
Can we submit our opinion of what that is for us to you before a meeting? I don't quite understand how we, how, for instance, I would be able to present what I thought, what were the findings that I didn't find and what were the ones that I agreed with.
Well, it would be based on the information you provided in the public hearing and the discussion. It would not be appropriate, and the city attorney could correct me, to provide those offline outside the public record because it wouldn't be a part of the formal discussion that was held for the project.
So are we being asked whether or not we want to agendize this and go through that? Is that what's happening?
I would suggest that if we do it, we do it as a whole commission and not as individuals.
Yeah, so there's three options before the commission. You could either not support the request and vote on the resolution before the commission this evening. You could direct staff to go back and amend the resolution to add language where staff saw commission support and then bring that before the commission. And commission could obviously discuss and amend that, and that would be done as an agendized item or as an agendized item. Or, that's the recommendation probably that I would go with if there is an interest in reviewing this further. Or the third option would be to bring back just the findings and have the commissioners then provide their input as to where they can and can't support the project, kind of whole, and I don't even know how to say it. Not a whole new review, but.
I think we'd be redoing what we've already done.
To some extent.
I would agree with, I would agree with what you've suggested.
I don't, because I don't, I think we already did it. And I think the argument can be taken to the city council and that if it comes back to us, we will be able to start at that point because this means that the city staff will be determining what those were, and I'm not comfortable with that. I want to, I want us to determine what those were.
We'll get to review them.
There's also, there's also a third or maybe fourth alternative that I think you could consider. I think it's a less elegant solution, but it's one that I've seen done and I believe to be legal in terms of your findings. And that is, this evening, you could add a finding to what is before you that says the commission also adopts as its findings the statements and comments of commissioners made during deliberations following the public hearing on the item. And that's another way that incorporates what you already said publicly at that hearing into the findings that then would be adopted by you and would be subject to the appeal to the city council. I say it's less elegant in the sense that it doesn't undertake the process of actually trying to set them forth in that writing, and instead it directs people to go back and look at the tape. But it still, as a legal matter, does incorporate your comments into those findings. I've seen it done before and it's, and some commissions and councils are comfortable doing it that way.
Yeah, I like that idea, yeah. That sounds good to me.
In that case, then the public record is amendized to the public, to the, which has some advantages. We don't have to rethink, you know, redo everything.
I think we should.
And the tape is the tape, right?
I mean, is the applicant okay with that? I feel like Mr. Mybar is here because he wants it in writing.
I'm not trying to burden the commission, but we were, there was comments by the commission, but it wasn't specifically focused on the findings. I think we could bring from the tape is helpful, but I think there is a, trying to confirm what those findings were to make sure the commission actually relates the facts with the findings. I think that's, that would be a benefit both to us and to the council rather than just saying it's in the tape. But I think that it doesn't have a chance for you all to review that again and make sure those were the findings that you were making at the time.
I don't think we should have to review it again. I mean, I think it was, it was, I liked what you said and I liked what Commissioner Knudsen said about it. I think it's, you know, I mean, we made, we made the decision if we didn't use the proper language, I mean, if we didn't use the finding language, that's one thing. But I think it was really clear what we thought. I think what our objections were pretty clear and that, you know, you could infer from our, you could infer which findings were, were being referred to. And maybe you can ask for that with the city council more clearly. Their decision is the final one anyway. It's kind of more important in the, you know. I mean, I respect your asking, but I don't, I don't, I really would like to go with the fourth option that Tom Brown suggested. That's my feeling.
So I just, as the city attorney, one of the concerns I had was if we do bring it, the item back, and commissioners start adding statements that they didn't previously make, and obviously that would have to occur in order for all 17 of the design review and 12 of the use permit findings to be fully fleshed out. And that is a legitimate thing for the commission to do. So that's not a concern from a legal standpoint. So the options before you are at a commission or at a condition that, or I'm sorry, a finding that says, and all other statements made are formally supported, direct staff to amend the resolution to include all findings and have an agendized discussion or vote on the item as it is before you. And there's a little bit of obviously nuance if, if you want me to bring it back with a full agendized discussion, but.
And there wouldn't be a public hearing for that, correct?
I don't.
There would not be, however, when Noah was correct in what he said about, you would be able to make statements that you didn't previously make, but the caveat there is that anything you would say that you wanted to include as part of the findings would have to have been supported by the evidence that was prevented during that hearing. So we can't use that process as a process for making up new bases for denial. It really needs to be something that is simply explaining how you are responding to the various findings requirements in your code based on the evidence that you heard while the public hearing was open.
Well, isn't it fairly obvious that, I mean, if we voted on the resolution as it is, obviously, we're going to stand by what we said on the tapes. I mean, you know, isn't that already sort of implied?
It's about adding more information to it.
I don't think we should revisit this. I think our decision was clear and, you know, the next step is an appeal to the city council. And I don't see why this, I've never seen this happen with any other denial and subsequent appeal. I don't see why, why we should do this.
I, it's, I want to disclose that I actually had a long conversation with the applicant's attorney last night about this, and so I contemplated a little bit further about this. And in my mind, going back and trying to get further clarification, it's really tough. It's really tough. I'd rather, this is a council matter at this point, I'd rather smooth the path to council rather than to, honestly, we'd have to go through the tape ourselves again to see what we said and what we didn't say and yeehee.
It is a, I think maybe the easiest way would be to vote on the resolution as it is, and then the council can take it from there and do it, do as they will. And if they want to watch the tapes, they can.
In my recommendation.
And I know that they're avid tape watchers.
My recommendation, although it shouldn't be construed as advocacy for this result, but my recommendation would be that if the commission is inclined to adopt that option, which is the simplest, which is adopting the findings that are as presented to you this evening, that you add my variation to it, which also incorporates an additional finding that the commission finds that its comments and the comments of all members made during deliberations should be included as the commission's findings.
Well, why wouldn't they be? They already would be. The record, that's what the record is of those tapes.
I can talk about the history of the case law, starting with the Topanga case from 1974, and we could go through the findings requirement.
Let me ask you.
But I'm giving you my best judgment as city attorney that that would help you with respect to defensible legal findings. That would help to have that in.
And I will add, as staff, the, if the item is appealed to the city council, staff will include a summary of both the comments made in support of the project and the comments made in concern or in opposition to the project by the commission. So that, I think, would get to some of the applicant's concerns over identifying that not every finding, I mean, the commission was not opposed to the project based on every finding that's required. It was on specific.
I have a question. So because, and if we do add that last finding to include what we said in the video, then the applicant may use our statements in their appeal process, correct?
The applicant will use your statements or not irrespective of whether you have that finding. Because, because typically.
Just public record.
Typically stakeholders in any proceeding administrative and judicial will use statements made during the process by you and by the public to advance their position in either proceeding. So you can expect that it, that the comments you made will be, and they typically are, used either on appeal to the council or if it goes beyond that.
I'm going to move that we adopt the resolution with the finding that Tom Brown has suggested for us to add on for the caveat to include the video footage statements.
I second it.
Roll call, please.
Can you please clarify who's second for the record, please?
It can be, if Grace wants to go on a second, that's fine.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes. Yes. Thank you for your consideration.
Next is, um.
Let's go grab Tracy.
Next item is, I beg your pardon?
Tracy. I know, we're so used to her.
Chair Person Kistner, could we bring Tracy back in?
No, I think we'll just leave her out.
Okay.
Okay. You just got voted out, Trace. Next is public hearings. File number PL17004. Location of the property is 1340 Main Street, Suite Number 102. Project description, applicant is seeking a use permit in order to open a combination sporting goods, hobby, and houseware store with an ancillary wine shop, Suite 102 of the Mennington Building at 1380 Main. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kistner. As you stated, the applicant is seeking a use permit in order to open a combination sporting goods, hobby, and houseware store with an ancillary wine shop in Suite 102 of the Mennington Building at 1380 Main Street. The store would occupy one of the three tenant spaces on the ground for the building and would be approximately. Occupy one of the three tenant spaces on the ground for the building and would be approximately. Good job, Axineal.
You're the Wizard of Oz.
That was a little crazy. Okay, the space is approximately 743 square feet in size. The applicant currently owns and operates New West Knife Works and the Mountain Man Toy Shop in Jackson Hole, Wyoming, and wishes to expand their retail operation to St. Helena. New West Knife Works features US-made kitchen colorery displayed in a gallery setting, and the Mountain Man Toy Shop is referred to as basically a store within a store and would reside within the larger umbrella of the New West Knife Works store. The Mountain Man Toy Shop offers tools, gifts, and accessories for the modern-day outdoorsman. The applicant states that the St. Helena store, while inspired by the Jackson Hole location, would have design elements and products unique to Napa County, including accessories made from used wine barrels. The applicant would like to have a small wine shop within the store that could offer locally-produced wines and housemade accessories. This component of the retail operation would mainly be to enhance marketing opportunities for the applicant. New West Knife Works also plans to produce branded knives and accessories using old wine barrels from partner wineries that can be packaged with the wine being sold. This ancillary wine shop would be subordinate to the primary retail use of the space and would compromise a maximum of 10% of the floor area of the store, and a condition of approval has been added to the resolution limiting that, that space. The project site is in the central business district. Sporting goods, hobby stores are permitted in the central business district. However, home furnishing stores, including the retail sale of metalware for kitchen use and wine shops, are conditional uses. And wine shops are establishments that basically produce and sell wines from multiple wineries and distributors. The applicant is essentially using the wine shop as a subordinate marketing tool, as previously stated, and they have agreed to the condition of approval, which would result in only about 29 square feet of the 743 for that space. As such, staff finds that the project meets and/or complies with the required findings to approve a use permit and recommends that the commission determine the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15301 and accept the required findings and approve a use permit for 1380 Main Street, Suite 102. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time, and the applicant is here, should you have any questions of them.
Any questions?
Yeah, is it 29 square feet or 74 square feet?
74, 74 square feet is the maximum it could be with the 10% limitation, however, they are only proposing the 29.
At this point, yeah.
Yep.
And that would include a tasting facility if they wanted to taste?
That, there's, tasting's ancillary to the wine shop, so they can basically do that separately. It's not, it's not an approved tasting room per se.
No, I understand that, but there would be a space for that, because it says that they would.
Yeah, and 29.
Okay. Is there any water needed for that to clean glasses or anything? I mean, I'm just asking.
I would assume that they would need water to clean glassware, but it's not going to be a heavy water user.
Right. I just wondered if that was part of the design. I couldn't tell. I've looked at those, but I couldn't tell.
Ken, can we add a finding for the proper ABC license to alcohol-related ops?
Yeah, yeah, that's not a problem.
Just to make sure they're properly permitted in that.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
And again, leaving that really to them, but their marketing plan of tying it to producers probably puts the producers in a bit of a bind, so we want to make sure we're clear of that.
No problem.
Yeah, they have to have a license from ABC.
Yeah, definitely.
Any other questions? The applicant like to speak?
Do I need to? Hi, my name's Corey Milligan. I'm the owner of New West Knife Works. We're celebrating our 20th year this year with always been the goal of making the finest kitchen knives in the world. And to my knowledge, we are the only high-end kitchen knife manufacturer in the United States, and we only sell direct to the customer. So we have a store in Jackson Hole, we have a website, and then this would be our second store. And so I think what could or should be compelling is that I would say probably 70% of the things that are in our store are things that people will see nowhere else but Jackson Hole and here. And I am, you know, I'm kind of a foodie and like local foodiness, and, and so that's why I ended up choosing St. Helena. It's a food center of the United States. The demographic is perfect match for our products and very similar to Jackson Hole. And so I am excited about incorporating local ideas into the things we make. So, and just a little about this, the alcohol portion is, it's a unique opportunity for me because many of the wineries here are also in the direct-to-customer business. And they, of course, probably wouldn't want to share their emails and contacts with other wineries, but I also have a really valuable email list, too. So I'm working on these ideas of co-marketing with the different wineries to introduce them to my customers and they introduce their customers to us. And then as we've been working on it, we've, you know, the main product I just can't wait for is to make steak knives out of the wine barrels. And then to have the opportunity to sell the very finest Napa Valley wines with a set of steak knives made out of the wine barrel of the wine that we're selling is, I mean, it's a slam dunk for me, but it's really just a cool product to have available. So that's really the focus of the wine thing for now. And then another, just to kind of tease you, another product that we're working on, it's going to take a little bit, but do you know that no one in America makes a high-quality, or any to my knowledge, wine key or sommelier tool to open wine bottles with? So that's another product that we're working on right now that I think is going to be another great addition to our store and just something cool signature to have from here.
A wine key?
Yeah, you know, the sommelier tool for opening wine bottles, that's kind of the little foldy one that you.
So nobody in the United States makes?
Not to my knowledge, yeah. I don't know if I had a wrap-up for that. Yeah, okay, good.
Thank you.
Do I wait for questions or?
Mr. Milligan, I have a question. Tell me about your store in Jackson Hole. How big is it? Do you also manufacture there or how does this work?
Yeah, that's a great question. Very similar in size. I think it's about 800 square feet. And I actually started the business doing art shows, so I've actually shown my work in Sol Solito at the art show there and Fort Mason. But, so that's the store, and then we actually do our own manufacturing. So we have a 1,600-square-foot shop in Jackson that we make most of the G-Fusion, we call it, kitchen knives. And then we also, I really am partnered with another production house in Idaho Falls, which is about 90 miles from there, where we really make the really handmade stuff. So all the way from forging the steel into this, what's called Damascus steel and hand grinding it, hand making the handles, all that stuff. And so it is unique to us. So, um, we have a 1,600-square-foot shop in Jackson that we, um, make most of the G-Fusion, we call it, kitchen knives. And then we also, I really am partnered with another, um, production house in Idaho Falls, which is about 90 miles from there, where we really make the, the really handmade stuff. So, all the way from forging the steel into this, what's called Damascus steel, and hand grinding it, hand making the handles, all that stuff. Um, and so it is unique to us. We really make what we sell. Um, also in the Mountain Man Toy Shop, we make tomahawks. You would be surprised what a big business that is in Jackson Hole. And then kind of handmade, really art piece belt knives, like a hunting knife or a camping knife, stuff like that.
You forge the steel there, you said?
That, in our shop in Idaho Falls.
Actually make the steel there?
Yeah, mhm. And then the steel for the more kind of small production kitchen knives comes from New York, and it's more of a super-high-tech kind of aerospace, kind of high-performance steel.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment? Close public comment. Sarah, would you like to open discussion?
I'm supportive, it's different. Let's do it. Just want to make sure they're properly licensed with the state of California with their ABC and make sure everything's all compliant liquor-wise or wine-wise.
Bobby?
Yeah, it's, um, really exciting what you're doing. You're really charming. I have a, a little reservation in the precedence that it sets. I remember, I think I can't remember if it was in the planning commission or in the city council, but I remember a couple of years ago, they were talking, somebody, one of the dress shops wanted to just serve wine in the back of the dress shop, because they just thought there actually should be wine serving in all the shops. I think that's, I think it was the city council. And, um, I thought, wow. And I remember when Cameo first started sets, you know, serving wine in, in there, in the theater for certain events. So, and it was like, oh, no, the movie theater, that, that's where I used to go when I was five and six, and it was, it was that special place where nothing like that was going on, and you just went in there and you got, you got the magic from the film, and you didn't need the magic. Well, anyway, so I have a little resistance to having alcohol served in the back of a shop that's not, you know, for that, because I think it sets a precedent. And I think that a lot of shops in town might want to do that, and I suppose that most people will think, well, you know, they can pay for the license and do it, and they, so what? But I, it just feels like, um, I don't know, it just feels like a little over the top. I mean, there's wine tasting at Whole Foods, there's wine tasting everywhere, and it just, it just seems like saturation. Well, I know, but I mean, in businesses, when you go into a business and there, and there's wine. So, anyway, I just have that resistance, otherwise I think it's a fabulous project, and I can see why, how the wine fits in, but I'm just worried about the precedent.
Uh, I have a question for Director House. Is that equitable, do you suppose, to sort of other businesses in town? To, um, Commissioner Monette's question about a liquor license, essentially?
Uh, so currently, I'll use the retail example, if you are a dress shop in town, you have a use permit for your dress shop, and it would not include alcohol sales. If you wanted to include alcohol sales, you would have to come back before the commission asking to either amend your use permit or asking for a use permit to allow alcohol sales, as the code requires anyone selling alcohol in St. Helena to obtain a use permit to allow them to do so. So, um, I, a lot of people are concerned about precedent-setting, but use permits are case-by-case and reviewed specific to the characteristics of the site and specific to the characteristics of the individual use being proposed. Um, and so if there's concern over precedent-setting, just know as a commissioner that anyone wishing to sell alcohol in St. Helena must gain approval from the planning commission order to do so.
Or serve it.
Well, this is, but I would say that, different from serving, our businesses throughout town, the dress shops included, have receptions and they'll have wine complimentary. This is completely part of a business model, in which that he's trying to tie back into producers using wine staves for his wood handles, is my kind of impression of that. Um, and so it is going to be a retail shop, it's not a wine tasting space. We asked about that, and I think that's very clear, and again, um, not unlike other retailers in town that may have a special trunk show and bring in wine, but in this case, he's talking about selling wine and going through all the proper licensing, which if the ABC doesn't grant, then he won't have. But at this point in time, I think it makes sense in the business model, and it ties back to the wine keys, all that ties in.
I totally, I agree, I don't disagree with you, but, um, I was told that any serving of wine, unless it's done either through the Chamber of Commerce or it's done as a nonprofit for fundraising, any serving...
Typically what they do, mainly most...
You need a license, you can't just do it once in a while.
No, you can get a, you can get a use license for it.
So, my, my comments were specific to alcohol sales in St. Helena, so retail sales of alcohol. ABC does issue temporary kind of one-day license for an event.
But you, yeah, but they have to, you have to do that, even if you're not selling it, even if you're just, if you're serving it.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, so, so then I'm assuming that Cameo does that, and, and...
Or if they have a nonprofit, I mean, you know, the Daisy will often have a fundraiser tied to, you know, they will certainly, you know...
One of the beauty shops in town.
And you actually don't have two beauty shops anymore, that was just recently passed.
Yes, beauty shops, you can...
Yeah, one of the beauty shops in town serving wine.
Okay.
So I'll just, I'll just add, the library is a perfect example. They often have one-time events where they sell beer or wine, and they get ABC permits that we have to sign up for the application.
Okay, well, you know, as long, that's what I'm thinking, as long as the permits are there, and they're, if they're nonprofit, and, you know, obviously. Okay, um, I'm, I'm hearing you.
Well, I guess I'll make my comments. I'm a knife freak, so I'm just thrilled to death to see this.
We did not know that about you, Grace.
I've got a whole line of them, and I still sharpen with a wet stone, so I'll be down to see you.
Will you be teaching sharpening?
He's going to do sharpening.
Kind of ad hoc a little bit, and we actually will offer shop sharpening, you know, as a service in the store, too.
But you won't teach us?
All right, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chuck Kistner?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now on 5.2, uh, PL 16068, location of the property is 1764 Park Street. The applicant is Kevin Horowitz. On behalf of property owners Tom Rinaldi and Beverly Kinney, is requesting a design review approval to construct a newly unenclosed wraparound porch extending along the west and south elevations of the existing residence. May I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair Kistner.
Lily, I'm sorry.
Oh, um, as Chair Kistner said, um, the applicant, Kevin Horowitz, is requesting design review approval to construct a new unenclosed wraparound porch that would extend along the south and west elevations, which would be the front and street-side setback, um, of the existing residence, which is located on the corner lot. Um, the proposed porch would be constructed of redwood and would exhibit a height of 1 foot 11 inches and project 8 feet from the residence. Um, a small porch roof clad in asphalt shingles and supported by simple wood posts would be added to provide shade and protection from the elements. Uh, the property exhibits a general plan, land use designation and zoning designation of medium-density residential. Uh, review of the project indicates that it meets all applicable development standards prescribed under this designation. Uh, the proposed porch would encroach 4 feet 6 inches into the required 20-foot setback along the front end side of the property, uh, which is below the 6-foot maximum allowed under zoning code section 17.112.060B, and which is applicable to unenclosed porches. Um, under zoning code section 17.40.070C, for a porch where at least one of the longest dimensions is unenclosed, is exempt from the FAR provisions. As such, the project is determined consistent with all applicable development standards. Uh, similarly, given the simplicity of the proposed porch and the appropriate scale and use of materials, it is not expected to diminish or otherwise detract from the character of the neighborhood or that of adjacent properties, and staff finds the project to be consistent with all applicable design review criteria. Um, with that, staff recommends that the planning, planning commission adopt a resolution finding that the project is exempt from the requirements of SEQA under Section 15301, and accept the required findings and approve design review for the Kinney-Rinaldi porch project.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I was wondering, was there no correspondence from any neighbors, or?
No, I did not receive any correspondence.
And my only question is on the encroachment, that, that is really on the sides that are frontage to the street, correct?
Yeah, that would apply to the street and front setback, yeah.
Is the applicant here?
Would you like to speak, sir?
I badly misspell my name, it's R-I-N-A-L-G-I, just for what it's worth. But, uh, we've lived in, in St. Helena for 40 years, and, um, we, we saw a picture of the, of the design and really loved it. So, I'm just going to pass that around if that's okay? And that was the before and after, and it's very similar to what we're trying to do. And, um, we do have a neighbor here who's all for it, as far as I could tell, and, uh, we know the neighbors, uh, real well in, in the area, and I, I think it's, it's going to be an improvement, um, in the neighborhood and, and not a detriment in any way. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to start the session, person?
I like porches, I think they invite neighborhood gatherings, so, um, and I know Tom invites neighborhood gatherings, so I think it would be consistent, and I would be supportive. Happy to see it.
It looks great. Really an improvement.
Yeah, I agree.
Very nice.
And my only concern was that if it were short-term rental, which I'd, almost positive it's not, um, or if any neighbors were worried about, you know, sitting on the porch and noise, I mean, that was the only thing, but obviously that's not happening. I think it's really beautiful, it's, it really makes a difference on your, how it will look. So I, I totally support it.
I like it a lot, and if Mr. McKelley's going to agree with something, I certainly am not going to disagree.
I know, I have so many little smart comments I could make right now, I'm just refraining and holding back.
Would you like to speak, Anthony? Go right ahead, Publix.
My name's Anthony McKelley, and I live at the corner of Cornell and Park Street, and I look directly down at this house. And, um, for Bombi's information, his daughter lives in this house and has been for five years? Six? Because I originally fixed the house up for him, but I retired a year ago, so I can't do anymore, anymore. But, but it, but I'm just glad people are fixing houses up in our neighborhood, because all you hear about is the west side. And I'm just glad people are living on the east side and taking an interest, and maybe all the houses will be redone, because, I, I don't know if all you know, but Henry Volker built all that subdivision himself, and they're all dated the same year of house when he did it, and I'm just glad people are changing the design of those houses, and I think it'll be an added improvement to our neighborhood.
Well, I used to live on Volker Court.
Okay, but the only question I have is, I never got a notice. And I thought, and I'm within 300 feet. I don't know why.
Oh, that's interesting.
Well, you got here anyway, Anthony.
That's important, huh?
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Well...
Second?
Second.
Don't we have to say the motion?
No.
Roll call.
Do, wait a minute.
It's, it's appropriate to just say, I move the staff recommendation.
I move the staff recommendation. I second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chuck Kistner?
Yes.
Next item is 5.3. The proposed amendment to municipal code, Chapter 17, 126, are intended to expand the application of the city's medical marijuana regulations to the cultivation and use of recreational marijuana and establish consistency with the state law as amended by the passage of Proposition 64, or Adult Use of Marijuana Act, AUMA. Excuse me.
Thank you, Chair. Um, as you mentioned, item 5.3 is a draft ordinance update, trying to, um, essentially do some housekeeping and bring our current, uh, medical marijuana regulations into compliance with the passage of Proposition 64, which as I'm sure everyone's aware, or will be after this presentation, allows recreational use of marijuana. Essentially, the, the main changes proposed are to primarily just remove the term "medical" from the regulations and apply the current regulations, which limits, um, cultivation activities to being fully enclosed or essentially indoors, not a nuisance, limited in the square footage, to apply to recreational cultivation as well as medical cultivation. Uh, they apply to municipal code, Chapter 17, 126. And this was in response to the November 8th passage of Proposition 64, as mentioned, um, which allows a maximum, or a minimum, I'm sorry, of six, uh, mature marijuana plants to be cultivated by individuals. There's lots of specifics as far as what that law allows for possession, and it essentially allowed the possession of marijuana, uh, the transportation of marijuana, a lot of, uh, expansions in the allowances beyond just what was previously allowed for medical marijuana. The changes are identified in red. Uh, there is an updated version of the draft ordinance that's provided on the dais for your review. There is some concern, um, over the potential exclusion of caregivers in the original ordinance update, that was bef- that was before the commission. Uh, that's been revised to allow caregivers to still provide cultivation activities in compliance with the medical marijuana regulations. And one question staff actually was hoping, and just so you know, um, your rec- your review tonight is of an ordinance change that the city council ultimately votes on. So you're essentially providing input on this direction, or I'm sorry, on these changes, to give the council additional direction in their review of the proposed ordinance. Uh, currently, um, delivery services are prohibited in St. Helena. However, um, in discussions with all the planning directors in the county, um, that's a question that each of us are asking our decision-making bodies to review. Uh, and it had, the, the concern would be is if you're allowed to transport a certain amount of marijuana, uh, but you're prohibited from delivering that marijuana, how can you really know the difference in the field? Uh, in addition, if there are no medical marijuana dispensaries allowed in the county or no, um, other retail operations available, if there are folks who choose to use marijuana for medicinal or recreational purposes but do not cultivate it themselves, we're essentially forcing folks to drive outside the county to get it, where there is an option, if the commission and the council were to see fit, to allow delivery services to allow that to be brought to individuals within St. Helena. So that's an, a question before the commission, that's not included in the current draft, um, but the police chief has been, the item is referred to the police chief, the police chief is not concerned, uh, over, um, the allowance of small amounts of deliveries to individuals. Uh, and the point being, you're allowed to transport it under the law. So as an individual, you're allowed to possess a certain amount, and you're allowed to transport a certain, certain amount. That's allowed for both medical and recreational marijuana. And so therefore, if someone were actually delivering it, and they were pulled over and found to be in possession, it would be difficult to, to make that determination. Uh, and then in addition to the fact that there are no current locations available for folks within the county to acquire it, that's information that staff wanted to provide to the commission in making their review and recommendation to the council.
We'd also get the sales tax if it's delivered here, right?
It's not selling it.
Even if it were bought in Oakland?
It's not a sale.
It's not selling.
You can't sell it.
Well, no, but the idea, if, if you're allowing delivery services, it would be to deliver it, in theory, for a price. So that, I mean, that's, that's before the commission, is you're prohibiting outdoor cultivation with this ordinance, you're prohibiting, prohibiting recreational sales at a retail level, do you want to permit delivery services which are either for a med- for a medical or a recreational product?
Can we clarify two things around that question? The first, the fee for service would be for the delivery service, not for reselling marijuana.
No, but if they bought it from, uh, because we don't have any medical, so, so medical marijuana person, if they buy the medic, the medical marijuana from Oakland, and it's delivered here, is it the same sales tax thing? Point of delivery is the place that gets the sales tax for the purchase.
And I'll just say, medical marijuana is not taxed for, at a retail level.
Right.
I cannot speak to how sales taxes would be enforced on delivery services of recreational marijuana.
Well, it's, it's hard to imagine how it's, um, how it's applied to the delivery of, of wine, too. I mean, you know, I don't think it is, but, I mean, just potentially, that would be a source of...
It would probably tie back to the nexus, and there probably wouldn't be a sales, I mean, you could, there's a potential people would avoid paying a sales tax if the facility isn't here.
Well, for recreational, you know...
And I, and staff has not looked into the law around.
Yeah. My, my question is really more around, um, there are, as a, on, you know, this is an entrepreneurial world, and there are a lot of, um, more professional delivery services popping up, phone apps, all that kind of thing, and so... And so, you know, I think there's a difference in my mind between, you know, my ability to deliver on behalf of a patient who can't get there, or whatever, and, and sort of small scale. So as long as the quantities that the, that can be transported are, are maintained consistent with our ordinance and our, our plan, I think that prevents us from opening up the door to many of these services, at least until the community's ready for that. But I mean, I think the community spoke pretty clearly, they don't want dispensaries. And suddenly having access to a variety of the phone ops available that are more or less mobile dispensaries, we just would, I would be, I would caution the commissioners as to thinking about what that is really, what we're opening the door to. Just be careful.
Well, I'm, along the same lines, I'm a little confused. And this could be because the state law is confusing, and not necessarily our ordinance, but it says on A, on page 84, you know, that you can possess, process, transport, and purchase marijuana. But then it says on page 86, that you, under number C2, that you cannot sell it. So if you are purchasing it, purchasing it, you're purchasing it from someone who's selling it. So how can you purchase it if there, if it can't be sold? And it just seems inconsistent. I don't know what it means.
You're completely accurate. It is inconsistent, because the, the language identified on page 84 is the current state law.
Right.
And the language identified on page 86 is the current municipal ordinance. The law allows jurisdictions to prohibit retail sales.
Mm-hmm.
So that is within the purview of the planning commission to prohibit those, which currently the language prohibits all retail sales.
But the state allows purchase. So is that...
But we, as a community, voted against, we, we decided on the stias that we would not have...
Medical marijuana dispensaries, that's what we voted on.
Maybe I could clarify. Prop 64, along with the predecessor law that dealt with medical marijuana, both authorized certain things to happen, including, as you're saying, and as the staff report points out, possession and sales are no longer criminalized under state law. But both of those laws were careful to reserve to each individual city the ability to make a local land use decision not to allow those activities. Not, not to ban use or possession, but to ban any sale within its jurisdiction, including deliveries, dispensaries, you know, other kinds of processing activities. So I think the confusion is the same one that many marijuana advocates have had over the years, which is, they believe that the state laws broadly authorize their activities irrespective of what local cities were doing, and that's not the law.
Well, I want to make it clear, I am not a marijuana advocate in any way. I'm, you know, I'm, you know, I have strong feelings about mind-altering substances. But I just...
Could I just, if I could raise one other point, I'm so sorry to interrupt. But the other thing that, that should be mentioned is that all the while that, that Prop 64 and its predecessor made certain changes to California law, it needs to be borne in mind that marijuana remains a Schedule I narcotic under federal law. And there is still considerable uncertainty as to how the federal law will be enforced in California. With the change of administration, you know, there had been a, a pretty clear signal by the former administration that, that enforcement activities by various US attorneys against local medical marijuana laws would not be a priority. With the enactment of Prop 64, which deals with recreational marijuana, and with the new administration, which has signaled that it didn't like the previous non-enforcement stance, the commission needs to know that that still is in some considerable ambiguity and doubt.
Right. I'm just trying to get, because if this is the case, that, you know, and I understand, okay, local, the local, we can say, you know, no sales, even though you can do it. But if this language says, should we also say in our ordinance, no buying? You know, no purchasing, or, you know, because...
The, the criminal act is in the purchase, is in the sale, not the purchase. So you have to split it. Who's violating the law? It's the individual selling it, not the individual buying it, because you're allowed to be in possession.
It's the opposite of prostitution. So, so, that's what I'm, okay, so, so if, well... So, okay, so then that's clear. If someone were buying it, they would not be breaking the law, the person selling it would be. And that, okay, so that's, that's right?
Should we loop it back to the conversation for this evening, which was, I think, your original question? Basically, we're cleaning up an ordinance that exists to just broaden it to be inconsistent, to be consistent with Prop 64. And the question you've just put out to us is, because it is legal within our jurisdiction to transport your own supply, do we want to open up also small-scale delivery on behalf of... Retail. Not retail, just literally, what, I think what you're basically saying is if someone is pulled over with this, with, I forget what the gram, what is it? .4 grams, or whatever it is?
I believe you're allowed 28 grams.
Yeah. So if you're 28 grams, you're driving, to take the burden off of our local police force of determining, are you delivering, are you taking it to your own home, or are you taking it to the home of a patient? Keep them out of it. Everything else stays the same. That's what you're asking us to consider.
That's correct. That's correct.
Well, it's one of the things being asked here. There's a lot in here.
Well, other than that, it is simply cleaning up the, to maintain the existing regulations, but to broaden them, to apply to recreational marijuana as well as medical marijuana.
And as this item was agendized, I don't believe it's appropriate for us to go back and re-discuss what we agreed on when we approved the original ordinance for medical marijuana, correct? I mean, wouldn't we have to make that more, more of a public discussion?
Well, I think we're just looking at the language to see if it makes sense. I just want it to make sense. I don't care, I'm, you know, I have no agenda. I'm perfectly in support of this. I just, it doesn't make sense in some places, that's all.
We could...
I think we could do a lot.
There's always the risk of getting off-topic when we, when we're here, but I, I will do my best to, to make sure we stay on the agenda side of it.
I have a question about C number three. It says, "The location of all cultivation activities is located outdoors." The location of all cultivation activity is located indoors and housed completely within a structure with no external indication of cultivation. You forgot to say, "or if outdoors," it will.
This prohibits outdoor cultivation. That's, that's the whole point of the ordinance.
I thought it says outdoors as long as it's completely contained in a, in a building.
That means it's not outdoors.
Well, it's a greenhouse. It's outside the home.
So that's, that's, it's, it's intentionally described as enclosed, so that way it can allow a greenhouse, but not called indoors, so it's not confused as being in the home.
I thought you spelled that out pretty clearly in here. You actually said it's a dis, if it's a... I'm not as quick to work with your microphone.
But it says it's located indoors, so that, that implies in your house, right?
Not necessarily.
No. Could be a shed. No, and maybe you can help, because I, when I read it in preparation, and I don't know where it quite is in here, it was very clear that you were just talking about a...
Doesn't make sense.
An exterior building that's disconnected from the primary residence, but that it too has to be fully contained.
That's correct. There is, there's, you're allowed to grow it inside your home, or you would be allowed to grow it, grow it in an accessory structure that's fully enclosed, whether it's a greenhouse or a shed. The whole concern is having, outdoor cultivation has the potential to be an attractive nuisance and to drive, you know, essentially crime activities, because it's a, it's, people see it and they may want to go take it.
No. Okay, well, see, okay. Up, up above on 17, 126, 030, it says, "Number one, occurs only indoors." And then, "Number two, the location of cultivation activities is indoors and/or housed completely." So isn't number one kind of, first of all, incorrect, and secondly, redundant? It's under, it's the second paragraph under three on page 86?
I've got the new one, and you're bringing the old one.
So, so above in the paragraph, it's a description of what the code says. Then below is the actual code language, which says enclosed.
Okay, so...
Would it be helpful if, Commissioner, because you're, this is the ordinance...
I know, I didn't get that until we got here tonight.
Right, that's when we all got it.
And I didn't have it in my, in my zoning thing, so...
It's, it's very slightly different than what's in the, in the planning commissioner's package.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just summarize what is allowed under this. You would be allowed to be in possession of a small amount. You would be allowed to cultivate up to six plants on your own property, fully enclosed, including in a greenhouse.
By a structure.
Yeah, that's right. Or in a different structure. The police department has reviewed this language. They're clear on the interpretation. Staff has reviewed the language. We're clear on the interpretation. If anyone else needs clarity in how we're interpreting it, we're happy to provide it.
I have one more question, then. Is, on, under D, on page two of this, two of this attachment, and it says marijuana means all plants, blah, blah, blah. And then there's a bunch crossed out, the mature stalks of the plant, fiber produced. And then, that's all crossed out, and then A is added, industrial hemp. So are the crossed-out things, is that what industrial hemp is?
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
I'm on, on the attachment that you handed out to us. The second page, it says Attachment 2, and it's under D3, and then there's D, and it's... Oh, you don't have those.
I, I, I know what you're talking about. So this, again, is getting back to changes in the state law.
So I don't understand what happened. I mean, so are those crossed-out part, is that, is that what industrial hemp comprises?
I, I can't tell you specifically why the state decided to cross that out and call it industrial hemp.
Okay, all right. And, okay.
But that's what it is.
And the weight of any other ingredient, that's just bizarre language. I don't, that's our added language. I don't know what that means.
It, it, it's in response to issues or elements that are in the state law. And I'm imagining they're trying to parse out industrial hemp or non-psychoactive elements that could be used for the production of other things versus...
Like lotion.
Versus the psychoactive elements, which is mainly what people are concerned with regulating.
Okay, I have no problem with that. I just wanted to understand it. Okay.
A little thick.
So I think the thing before the commission now is whether we're gonna permit delivery.
That, that would be, yeah, should, do you want to suggest that the council... That's exactly right. Review the proposals as they're drafted, and then provide direction to the council whether they should consider deliveries, yes or no, or be, remain neutral on it. I mean, it's before the commission.
My, my only feedback on that, as I stated earlier, was that it would be consistent with our ordinance and consistent in what individual transportation is, and to stay out of the realm of the proliferation of retail deliver, not retail, but remote or app-driven.
And do you believe, Commissioner Sweeney, do you think that is handled by the size limits, limitations? Is that, or is it, do we need something further?
So, so, so I'm hearing is...
I would say, yeah, I, I think it would be. I think that, you know, if you're serving multiple customers, you would probably exceed the 28 grams. And if you were simply an individual delivering to somebody else, you probably would, I don't know that much about it. My point, and again, this is... I don't even know what 28 grams looks like, so... Yeah. Is that a lot?
Are you saying you, you approve the delivery?
Yes, I would support, I mean, again, this is just our, our, we're not approving anything. We're just basically recommending the council consider. And I would support councils considering of the recommendation to include delivery, to simplify it for our police force, you know, up, up to that point at which it becomes a commercial enterprise. And however that gets defined, I'm open to interpretation.
I would agree with that. And also to facilitate delivery to people who really are using it for medical. I don't think they should be denied their, delivery of their medication, since we don't have.
I mean, none, none of us appear to be experts, but it does seem like that 28 grams, if that's the limit on individual use, then why not have that be the limit for delivery?
Well, because somebody might be delivering to, for, you know, to more than one person.
Tough.
Yeah, they can make multiple trips. Yeah, I think we're just making it harder for our police. I mean, again, they have enough on their plate. If, if this is legal, the citizens have voted across the state, we're just adding a level of complexity that I don't know is helpful. And the council can decide. I mean, the council will take, once it's on the agenda, the council will take public comment, and the citizens will speak.
I mean, I think, Commissioner Sweeney, your thoughts, that if it's sort of the roving delivery vans, which are actually a roving retail establishment, we don't necessarily want those plying our streets. They may ply the streets of, I don't know where they'd ply the streets, but at least here, you gotta fit.
Well, my sense is, my sense is here, whatever weed comes in is gonna come in anyway, and plenty comes in, and, you know, whatever, you know. I, I just, I'm thinking in terms of innocent until proven guilty, and that if people are delivering to people who have bought it, and rightfully, lawfully have bought it, and or lawfully need it for medication, that you shouldn't, I think it's rather rude, or, I mean, rather harsh to say, oh, well, make two trips, that's more cars on the road, that's more pollution, you know? Why not? If, I don't know if we should license...
Well, my point isn't even to get that granular. It's really just, we're already allowing individual transport, and who gets it on the other end of that transport shouldn't matter, right? For whatever reason, doesn't, I don't think we should even weigh in on that, but if we're allowing people to drive around 28 grams in their car, and that's legal, and the police are comfortable with it. I mean, dare I ask, can medical providers carry more?
If, if you're a designated caregiver, then you have the right to possess more under the law.
Then there you go.
That's under the old law.
But it's legal now for recreation.
Under the current, that's exactly, under the medical cannabis regulations.
Right, but it's, it's legal, though, now, for recreation, and so, you know, it's, it's just based on previous prejudice that they, that you wouldn't want people to get as much marijuana as they wanted for recreation, you know, within, to have it delivered as, as you would want to have, you know, wine delivered.
Yeah, I have no issue. My, my point is just make it easy for our police force, and if we're, it sounds like we've isolated one area, not, so might as well just open it up to both. It's kind of what your question was initially, right?
But it does sound like Commissioner Monette, that, I mean, you don't want to sort of backdoor in retail.
Right.
That's the problem with saying it doesn't matter the size. I mean, so here's, here in our little town, you have to play by our rules, right? So our rules are that you can, you know, if you're a medical provider, you can provide as, whatever the, but if you're not, if you're doing retail operations, then...
Which, yeah, but the medical providers, let me point out, could very, you know, I mean, nobody's checking, and nobody should be checking. They could be, you know. I guess if there were no marijuana in this town, except for medical marijuana, and this would be opening the door for marijuana to come into this town, it might be, you know, an argument that made sense. But there is a norm, if you, you know, if you want weed here, you get it. It's just like any other place, you know? I guess, I'm wondering if we can be, if we can approve the transportation, the transport of it, and be neutral on the amount thing? I guess you guys want to be specific.
The amount's already in the ordinance. The only, the only thing different that wasn't addressed in the document we have before us, is I, if I understand it, is just simply opening that, that term "delivery." It's just not even adding all the other belles, it's just, it's sort of transport and/or delivery.
If you don't, if you don't tie it to a maximum amount, in, in theory, you would be, you could be by default approving mobile dispensary services. But from a recreational standpoint, not a medical standpoint.
The amount is limited by state law anyway. So, so they can't carry more than the state law allows. And you, the city of St. Helena has no authority to allow them to carry more than, than Prop 64 allows.
I wouldn't want them to, I guess, but, but, so if we just approve the transportation, that'll be in there, that'll just be, we're not putting something additional into the amount or anything.
But the delivery word would be, that would be net additional. That, that is a material change, right?
That's correct, and that's why it's brought before the commission. Deliveries were expressly prohibited in our, are expressly prohibited even for medical marijuana in our current ordinance, which is why that's brought before the commission.
Yeah, no, it's a fair consideration. I think.
Sounds good to me.
Do I hear a motion?
I move to accept the staff recommendation.
Including recommendation to allow possession for the intent of delivery up to the allowable amounts under the current regulations for transportation.
Yes. It's a fair way.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monette?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
So as, I have a brief PowerPoint for item 6.1.
Yep.
And as this comes up, I'll just apologize briefly to the commission. This is a, a update for the city's annual housing element progress reports. And I'll apologize on two, two fronts. reports, and I'll apologize on two fronts. One, it's for calendar years 2011 through 2016, and it's intended to be an annual report. So, obviously, staff has been remiss in bringing these updates before the commission and the city council. In addition, this item was presented kind of out of step. Typically, this would come before the planning commission, and then on to the city council. You would have the opportunity to review it and provide your comments to staff and the council before it's presented to them. However, this item was presented to the city council at the last meeting. The lack of compliance with this was essentially brought to the attention of staff in the Napa Valley Transportation Authority approving a grant for the downtown sidewalk improvements of over a million dollars to allow St. Helena to replace all the sidewalks downtown. A condition of that grant was that we are in compliance and up-to-date with our annual housing element progress reports. We quickly checked to see the status of where we were and noticed we were woefully out of date. So, just my apologies, and we have added this to the annual calendar, so you will be seeing this next February, prior to it going on to the council.
Were you going to, at some point, clarify to the public about... Are you going to do that down the road, or now?
I'm going to present the item and have some additional information. Yeah. So, Government Code Section, let's see if I can get this to work.
65400.
Can you just advance it? Government Code Section 65400 identifies that by April 1st, general law cities, which St. Helena is, we don't have a charter, are required to submit an annual report to the city council, the Office of Planning and Research, and the Department of Housing and Community Development, outlining the progress the city's made towards implementing the city's housing element, which is a part of the general plan. It's supposed to detail local efforts to remove governmental constraints to the maintenance, improvement, and development of housing citywide, and this must detail the actions taken by the local government towards completion of the programs and status of the local government's compliance with the deadlines identified in the housing element. So, as you review the housing element, you'll see there's a lot of kind of time-sensitive deadlines, and it includes kind of progress reports, and those are specific to our most recent housing element and general plan efforts in the 2015-2016 reports. The previous ones were kind of reflective of somewhat of a lack of development and the previous housing element's goals. So, as mentioned, the last housing element progress report for the city was prepared in 2010. As such, the annual progress report's been prepared for all the years since, and brought before you as attachments two through seven. The 2000... In 2009, the city... There we go. Thank you. In 2009, the city council adopted the housing element, which was a cycle of 2009 through 2014, and in that, there was a RENA goal, or Regional Housing Needs Assessment goal, of 121 new units. The city, through that period, issued building permits for 66 units, or 55% of that number. In 2015 through 2023, our most recent housing element cycle, that was adopted on May 26 of 2015, you'll notice there's been a significant change in the RENA expectations. Those are based on housing and population growth projections done by ABAG, in our case, so your local kind of regional government, and required, or I'm sorry, I shouldn't say required, identified that St. Helena should produce a total of 31 new housing units citywide, and since then, the city has issued 10 building permits for new units within the city. It's worth noting that the RENA numbers, it's Regional Housing Needs Assessment, it's purely a planning tool. It's no penalties for not meeting it. It's not a requirement of the state. Having your housing element certified by the state is a requirement, essentially, for you to move forward with implementing the goals that are identified in the housing element, and the intent of that is to show the state how you will plan for and accommodate the growth that is projected in your city based on your regional government's projections. Our regional government, as I mentioned, is ABAG, and our number that we're working for through this housing element is a total of 31 units. There was a typo in the reports that were before you. Interestingly, we had some analysis in the housing element that broke up very low income and extremely low income. However, the state puts all those into one number, and it's a total of eight very low and extremely low-income units that the RENA numbers identify for the city over the time period of the current housing element. However, that is not a requirement. That's a goal to be met. So, this slide just identifies kind of each of the different tables and what's intended for them, but essentially, it's just a summary of what the city has done to approve residential development, allow the rehabilitation of residential development in some areas, and it does include second units. There's going to be an ordinance update brought before the commission shortly in the near term, which is also in response to some changes in state law that make it significantly easier for folks to build second units or granny units. So, the goal, as you know, is the state has been working to see how they can kind of spur more residential development city or statewide, and one of the things they've done is essentially co-opted the city's ability to preclude residential granny units or second units, called accessory dwelling units, really limiting the city's ability to say no to them. So, you'll see an updated ordinance similar to the medical marijuana, or I'm sorry, recreational marijuana one, trying to bring the city's laws in compliance with the state law, and that'll be probably the next or two meetings from today. So, essentially, this slide just identifies what information's in what tables, and then Table C is probably the most interesting for the commission to review. Again, that talks about the status of the current housing element goals, what we're doing to meet those goals, and kind of where we are in attainment of them and those policies and objectives. This is a summary of the most recent table, and it just identifies how it has a typo in it. It says four units. It's actually supposed to be eight, because it includes very low and extremely low. Next slide. And then, you'll see what that does, is that results in a total of 31 RENA units, which we're supposed to... The state has identified as a goal for us, and so, just to point that correction out, and with that, next slide.
So, the very low is supposed to be eight? Is that what you said?
That's exactly right. It's recommended that by the Planning and Community Improvement Department that the planning commission review and comment on the report as needed, and file and receive for future review as applicable on other projects. That concludes my presentation. Available for questions.
So, just one question, not about the report specifically, but about the process. So, in order to be compliant to receive the grant, this has already been presented to council, so this is, in essence, a formality.
100%.
Yeah.
And again, my apologies, as typically, typically, cities will use this as an opportunity to talk about progress meeting the general plan as a whole, progress in housing as a whole, all those things. You know, we're not quite ready to present on our progress on that yet, and so, this is somewhat of a formality, but I do intend to make it a broader presentation next year, especially given some of the goals that the council and commission have identified for housing citywide.
And I guess to that, and that probably explains the limited audience that we have this evening, because if this were truly a discussion about our progress towards goals and other activities, we would see more speakers. So, for those folks at home, just, that's, I think, it's important.
I think they were there last Tuesday.
The number...
Exactly.
Fortunately, we have...
The number of the audience is limited, but certainly, the person who's here is not at all limited.
And thank goodness, it's the fifth estate, so very good. Commissioner, I mean, sorry, Director House, I mean, great job at getting us back on track, so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will give lots of credit to Grants Manager Prokowski and Contract Planner Lily Bianco. They both really did most of the work on this. I just assisted.
Well, pass that along, please.
I will. Thank you.
Happy to see sidewalks potentially being funded by our...
Yeah.
Yes.
That's fantastic.
Nothing like a million dollars to get people moving.
That's exactly right.
But I'm wondering, is our CCNRs mentioned anywhere in here, or is that just not even the right place?
CCNRs are not, they're not even a concept in any of your housing element analysis, because they're not enforced by the city. Those are private agreements enforced by private citizens and homeowners associations.
But do some cities disallow them or prohibit them?
No, CCNRs are actually required of any subdivision, because you have to identify how any communal property in a subdivision is to be managed. So, I guess there could be very limited circumstances where a subdivision would be created without CCNRs, but it's uncommon unless you replace the CCNRs with a improvement district, which this is getting very much into the weeds of kind of subdivision law and how you would manage them and how you would fund them.
Yeah, I just noticed under this on-page, but, okay, I'll talk to you about it. It's interesting. I don't understand. Okay. You know, I just know there was conflict recently here between the idea of the CCNRs and what the city, you know, I think Tom Brown weighed in at that time.
Do we even talk about this right now?
It's in here. It's right here. It's on-page. Well, if you guys are bored, I mean, I just, I thought...
It's not a board. It's a...
But Tom was, I can't remember exactly what you said.
Well, I mean, Planning Director House said what the rule is correctly. Cities really have no role in enforcing private CCNRs, and I do recall that meeting, and there was a misunderstanding, I think, among many in the audience who felt that the city should be assuming that role.
But is it, do the CCNRs, if they go against the general plan of the housing element, are they... Does the city have anything to say about them, or?
No.
Oh. So, they would have to end up in court.
Sometimes when cities approve subdivisions, cities will be involved in reviewing the CCNRs at the outset, when they're first created, but once they're being, once they're in place and they are to be enforced by the homeowners association, if there is one, and by the owners who are either benefited or burdened by those CCNRs.
Okay.
See, the homeowners, when you're talking about, were not being enforced at that point by the homeowners association over there.
Okay.
Okay. We don't have any scheduled matters, any department reports.
Yes, briefly.
Do we need to officially accept this report?
Yeah, please, accept.
I move to accept this report.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Sure.
Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Next is scheduled matters, which we have none. Department reports. Director House.
So, we do need to vote for a new vice chair, given the recent kind of shuffle of the commission with the election, and I would say, I would like to give a brief update on some of the projects that are before the, are under review and have been for a while. The council specifically asked that I give a brief update on the Hunter project, the Hall Hotel, and the Friedrich project, so I'm just going to give the commission that same presentation. The Hunter project staff has identified a few remaining issues needed to be addressed in order to finalize the EIR. We've provided those comments to the consultant who's working on that document. They identified a cost associated with finalizing it, and we informed the applicant, Mr. Hunter, of the needs to fund those additional changes, and he's currently considering and digesting that cost prior to us being able to finalize the EIR document. So, just letting you know that's where that document is or that process. Mr. Hall, Ted Hall, did file an application for a hotel on the 1,000 Mills Lane property, formerly owned by Mr. Domaine. That application was put into place under review, and then it was revised by the applicant, and so, there was a little bit of a hiccup in our review process, just essentially, the scope of the project was reduced slightly, and so, we started our review again, so that's just letting you know where that is. Staff review is underway. I anticipate an issues letter being sent to the applicant shortly, and we have been having conversations with their secret consultant and expect the secret analysis to move forward, as well as giving them the issues that are identifying what they need to revise in order for the application to move forward with the city.
And they haven't determined if it's that they're going to mitigate an egg deck or an EIR.
No, that's correct. We have not. The initial study is underway, but there has not been a final determination. And then, Mr. Friedrich came and presented to the council with an update himself. Essentially, he identified that he is intending to move forward with his project, which is, it's held valid by a development agreement through 2020. I can't remember the exact date. I believe he said 2022, but I know it's beyond 2020. And he's trying to figure out the best way to implement all of the requirements of the development agreement, and we've been working with him a little bit on that, so just keeping you up to date. Also, in addition, staff, the building official, Daryl Mays, is no longer with the city, so we're operating purely under consultants with building inspection and plan check services. However, staff does anticipate getting a recruitment underway. However, we will be bringing the salary to the council, asking them to increase the salary to try to make our recruitment more competitive for building official services. So, that'll go to the council, I believe, at their next meeting, and then, based on their direction for the salary, we will get the job listed and hopefully get somebody filled in the coming months.
Is that going to be on the consent?
I haven't determined that yet, but possibly. It'll be on whatever calendar is typical of those types of requests at the council.
Director House, this may not be part of the department reports, and maybe it needs to be agendized for something further, but some constituents did ask me about the Spring Street demolition permit that was pulled, or I actually don't understand.
Red-tagged.
Yeah. I'm happy to give a brief summary of that. So, the council or the commission may remember 1508 Spring Street, which is a design review and a variance application before the commission. It was denied. It was appealed to the city council. City council approved it. Unfortunately, a significant amount of work was done on that home without the benefit of a permit. Their building permit had not been issued, and also, it went well beyond the scope of what was allowed in the design review approval, which was granted by the city council. So, staff is meeting with the applicant tomorrow. We've provided them some draft direction and is meeting with the applicant tomorrow to try to finalize the way to resolve that situation. And there's an excellent article in the Star, which was completely accurate in everything it identified.
If Jesse were there, it's always accurate.
I know. Jesse's so great.
All right. Do I hear a nomination for the vice chair?
I nominate Sarah to be vice chair.
I hear a second?
I would second, if she's willing to do it. Thank you. Yes, I will.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Monet?
Yes.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes.
Commissioner Knudsen?
Yes.
Chair Kistner?
Yes.
Sarah? Yes. Thank you.
Guess that's it.
All right.
Planning commission is adjourned.